I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Low call please Ms. Garza.
Yes. Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Wyman Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seberg.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Morales.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions and deletions to the consent agenda?
Yes, under personnel, consent agenda, the ratification of personnel.
Thank you very much. Next, superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, Dr. McGwark, other members of the board. Good evening to you and good evening to everyone that is here with us tonight. I do stand before you to share some spotlights and announcements, many that we are very, very excited about. Our first two recipients are not with us, but as you recall, a couple of weeks ago when I was here before you, I shared some information about some of our recent spring award winners, how we have been surprising them on their campuses to let them know about their awards. So I wanted to let you know about a couple that we just completed here recently. Right here. So we have the Support Employee Excellence Award winner. Each year, the school division recognizes a support staff member who demonstrates leadership and goes above and beyond to provide outstanding service to the students and staff, parents, and school community. This year, David Peacher, which is the head custodian at Metz Middle School, was recognized and he was surprised at his school as he was informed that he had been named the 2018 MCPS Support Employee Excellence Award winner. So as you can see, he's there surrounded by several people from his staff. So we congratulate Mr. Peacher. The teacher education and mentor or team program at MCPS recently announced the outstanding first, second, third-year teachers and mentor teachers for 2017-18. The team program strives to support new teachers, whether they are new to the profession or new to MCPS as they make the transition into the Manassas City community. The following teachers, which were nominated by their peers, were recognized at an award ceremony on May 10th, 2018. So our outstanding first-year elementary teacher was Taylor Jewett from Round Elementary; outstanding first-year secondary teacher, Megan Grace from Baldwin Intermediate; outstanding second-year teacher Brett McGee, Hayden Elementary; our outstanding third-year teacher, Marlon Cockrell from Weems Elementary; and then we had two outstanding mentors, Maxine Taylor, who services Baldwin Elementary, Round, and Weems; and Debbie Smith from Dean Elementary. So when you see them on the campuses or out in the community, please be sure to congratulate all of our award winners. Okay. Our next awards are recognitions for tonight. You got that, Ms. Garza? Thank you. Osborne High School Student Council Association. For its exemplary record of leadership, service, and activities that serve to improve the school and community, the Osborne High School Student Council has been recognized as a 2018 National Gold Council of Excellence by the National Student Council. To meet the requirements for the National Council of Excellence Award, a student council must meet a variety of criteria. In addition to basic requirements such as written constitution, regular meetings, a democratic election process, the councils have demonstrated successful sponsorship and participation in activities such as leadership development and service to the school and community. Osborne Student Council documented 52 activities and submitted four projects in the national project database in order to be considered for this award. Councils awarded the gold level of the award, has successfully demonstrated the highest levels of leadership, and Osborne has done that for the past three years. In addition, the Virginia Student Council's Association honors member schools who promote leadership and community service through their school's student council, activities by awarding an achievement award. In order to be recognized, schools must apply and submit documentation of completing a variety of activities throughout the school year. This process is a bit simpler, they say. We have a total of eight projects that have yet to be submitted, one of which is required. Osborne has been recognized with this award for the past four years. These two awards are a true representation of the diverse program of work that Osborne Student Council has implemented since 2014. Tonight, as I call your names, Leon Sanga, and you all can join us down front, please. Leon Sanga, Jenny Liu, and Samantha Donaire, representatives of the Osborne SCA Leadership Team, are here to accept these two awards. Their faculty advisors are also here, Robin Albrecht and Sarah Weaver. And although this is a representation of the total body of student council members, they recognize that they alone did not make this happen. The total number of students and community members affected by their work cannot be measured. The SCA extends a heartfelt thank you to those students who wrote the document. They are very proud to be a part of the SCA. We are proud of Osborne's SCA for their many accomplishments that they have achieved representing us at the state and the national level. Even with all that they have accomplished, they tell me that they are very anxious to begin the 2018-2019 school year. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much. Y'all look great. Thank you. Congratulations. Tonight, Manassas City Public Schools would like to recognize and thank the members of the Manassas City Police Department who worked tirelessly to support our schools and the greater Manassas community. We are honored to publicly thank our chief of police, our school resource officers, and those serving in the MCPD who also graduated from Osborne High School. So tonight, as I call your names, officers, would you please come forward? And I believe at this time, we would like the entire board to come down as we take our photograph with our officers. Thank you. So I would like to begin with Chief Doug King. And I know he didn't know that I was going to say it, but Chief King is not an Osborne graduate. He did graduate from Stonewall, but he married an Osborne graduate. So we give him a pass. That's right. He said he married up. So we give him a pass. School Resource Officer Kenyatta Grigsby from Osborne. We appreciate you. And then we have several officers who we are very proud of, as I said before, they are Osborne graduates. I think a few of them couldn't be here tonight, but I would like to call their names. If you are here, please come forward. School Resource Officer Brian Hogan at Metz. School Resource Officer Trey Lawler from Mayfield. Sergeant Justin Lehman. Senior Police Officer Dustin Hoag. Lieutenant Chris Shields. It's okay. Senior Police Officer Brittany Alexander. Officer Marcus Hyde. Officer Warren Connor Lane. And Master Police Officer Robert Bobby Ovay. So we thank all of you. I mean, it's amazing. I see these officers at our schools and interacting with our students on a regular basis, and we just can't even express how grateful we are to have the connection that we have with our local community and our officers the way that we do. Thank you so much for all that you do for us. Thank you so much. We might have to kind of push it. Yeah. That's right. Yeah, get our students up front there a little bit. Thank you all. Let's see. He's gonna be able to get you, I think. Can you see Mr. Williams back there? Okay.
Oh, no. Yeah. Maybe he's scanning the steps. Or, yeah, just go over there. There we go. All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Next, we have board committee reports. Academics Committee Chairman Suzanne Seberg.
Yes, thank you. The academics committee met on May 15th to discuss preliminary results of the pre-K program, profile of the graduate, and also the 2019-2020 school calendar. And those matters will move forward to be discussed at future meetings with the full board. And tonight, we'll discuss the proposed calendar.
Thank you. Next, educational support. Mr. Chairman Tim Di Maria.
Thank you, sir. We met last night. Mr. Hawkins and Mr. Hilton gave us an overview of what's going on with the CIP, where we are on some of our projects. We talked a little bit about a right of way that the city needs at Metz that is unobtrusive. Would that be the right word? Okay. And so everything was pretty benign, but we're moving forward.
Cool. Thank you. Policy Committee Chairman Kristen Kiefer.
No report.
Finance Committee Chairman Scott Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since the last meeting, we have had another joint session with city council. We have another session scheduled for the 30th of May. I'd encourage folks to get involved. Last meeting, we finally reached consensus among the two governing bodies that we're gonna quit talking about the past. And as a matter of fact, we're gonna quit talking about it and we're gonna actually do something. We reached agreement that there really is a need for our school. We really do have continuing enrollment that shows no signs of stopping for this foreseeable future, that we do have a constitutional and moral obligation to educate children. And now let's figure out what we have to do about it. So now that we've all postured, hopefully the next couple of meetings we'll have will result in something good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Personnel Committee Chairman Robin Williams.
No report. Please report, sir.
Thank you. Next, Board Member Comments. We'll start with our student representatives, and Mr. Hernandez Morales will go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The lounge this Saturday is being held at 7:00 PM. I encourage anyone who wants to see any talent, raw talent, from students at Osborne High School. I was there last time in January, or December, it was in the wintertime, and I was honestly blown away. I really encourage anyone else to support them. And there's a writing workshop for the Writing Center. It's like a master class after school on Thursday from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. There's gonna be a keynote speaker known as Hart Field, and she's just gonna be there to, I guess, it's a workshop, writing workshop, so anyone who wants to attend can attend as well. There's also an extension on the Governor STEM Academy at Osborne High School for rising ninth graders and 10th graders on May 30th. And I really encourage any students who really want to delve into the STEM Academy to pursue it, because when I was in ninth grade or 10th grade, yeah, when I was in eighth grade or ninth grade, I don't think there was like as many programs as like that or that I was informed of. But I really encourage anyone who's out there listening or on TV to really pursue that. And May 30th is the special awards night for students, I guess, who receive some type of accolade. And it's really encourage, I encourage everyone else to go again. I'm encouraging everyone to go. It's at 7:00 PM, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just last Friday, a school shooting occurred at Santa Fe High School in Santa Fe, Texas. This time, the lives of 10 students were taken. While simply offering thoughts and prayers to the victims of this act of terror would suffice for most, I have come to the realization that thoughts and prayers do little to honor the lives of Aaron Kyle McLeod, the bright 15-year-old freshman who loved movies and his Playstation; Angelique Ramirez, the stylish 15-year-old who frequented her church's youth group and was known as her family's Rainbow Baby Girl; Kimberly Vaughn, a Girl Scout who planned to start an American Sign Language course for parents of young kids with speech or hearing problems; Cynthia Tisdale, a substitute teacher and mother of four whose husband is suffering from terminal lung disease; Sabika Sheik, a 15-year-old Pakistani exchange student with hopes of becoming a diplomat; Chris Stone, a 17-year-old junior who loved adventure and being a brother to his sisters; Jared Black, a 15-year-old whose birthday was three days before the shooting; Shauna Fisher, a 16-year-old whose birthday was 10 days before the shooting, and plans for summer break and getting a driver's license were cut short; Glenda Ann Perkins, a substitute teacher, wife, and mother who sacrificed her own life to get other people out in safe and time; and Christian Riley Garcia, a 15-year-old Toby Keith fan who loves to be outdoors and play football. To truly honor the students whose lives were unjustly taken, we should start by putting our actions behind our words and tragedies like Santa Fe and Parkland shootings become a thing of the past. According to Texas Governor Greg Abbott, the Santa Fe shooter acquired guns from his father. Texas has some of the least stringent gun laws in America, requiring no minimum age to possess a gun, no purchasing, possession, and registration permits either. In contrast, Massachusetts gun buyers must complete a four-hour gun safety course, get character references from two people, and have a one-on-one interview with a police officer. Massachusetts has the lowest gun death rate in America. It is no shock that Virginia, my home state and that of the National Rifle Association sitting a mere 13 miles from our current location, also has some of the loosest gun restriction laws in the country. Red flag laws, relinquishment laws, assault weapon bans, high-capacity magazine bans, and mandatory universal background checks are all nonexistent in Virginia. As a current Virginia high school student and concerned American, I ask that you consider these people and continue to consider these facts at the polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start off by congratulating everybody recognized tonight, David Peacher, our outstanding educators, and the OHS Student Council. And following up on my colleague, I want to thank our resource officers for keeping us all safe in all the schools. You do an outstanding job, and we appreciate you every day. It helps us sleep a little better as board members. So thank you for all you do. That concludes my.
Thank you. Ms. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When there's heartbreak in the world around us, or when we're stressed from life's daily challenges, the power of music has the ability to bring us together. So I wanted to thank the Osborne Coral and Fine Arts Department for their awesome spring show last Friday and Saturday night. And as ever mentioned, the lounge is coming up Saturday night, and this is where students do poetry, music acts, and other kinds of verbal expression. It's a great show, and it's a really good thing to go out and support our students. So again, that's Saturday night at 7:00 PM at Osborne. Also coming up is the Jazz Cafe, Tuesday, May 29th, 7:00 PM at Osborne. So I hope you can enjoy summer all of these events. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to acknowledge everybody who was honored tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Manassas City Police Officers. We're so thankful for everything you do, keeping us safe. I also want to thank Mr. Anderson for his kind words and in-depth expression of each student. That was real moving. You're bringing me to tears. Also, I wanted to also thank Mr. Morales and Mr. Anderson. I had the opportunity, was it last week? They presented the Osborne Writing Center accomplishments and improvements from last year to this year, and the number of people that are participating, the number of students who are tutoring other students and their peers, and it's amazing to see that growth. And I'm excited that so many Osborne High School students are taking advantage of that opportunity. I also want to just go ahead and kind of, in advance, say congratulations to all the students who we will be recognizing on the Night of Excellence, which I believe is Thursday evening. These are people who are going to be receiving scholarships, and I just want to say in public that I'm very excited to be there. I'm very honored to know them, be a part of them. The amount of hard work and diligence they put into their lives on a daily basis is amazing what these kids do. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you for all that you do for our community. And with that, I will end my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Di Maria.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna jump off of what Mr. Albrecht said about the Joint Finance Committee. We had one last week. Hopefully, we're gonna make progress. There is a gap there on the funding we need and the funding we're getting. But my point here is that everybody who believes that we need better funding for our schools needs to let the funding bodies know that. Either your delegate, your senator, or your council people, they all need to know how we feel about funding. And at that joint meeting, Mr. Albrecht is, has done a fine job leading us, and I appreciate that very much. And all seven of us were at that meeting. That's how important this is to us. Our superintendent was there as our incoming superintendent. This is very important stuff, and this board is taking it very seriously. Ms. Kiefer, Mr. Albrecht, and myself are on the committee. We're the only ones that are kind of required to be there, but our other four board members were there in support, and I was very impressed. So to my other four board members, I appreciate you being there. Mr. Anderson, thank you very much. I appreciate your words, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A sincere congratulations to those you recognized, and a thanks for those in blue for their service. Echoing what Mr. Di Maria said about the joint meeting, this is the time. The funding bodies, the city of Manassas schools have the same amount of money per student that we had in 2006. While inflation has gone up about 22%, we all know what the price of gas does, we all know what the price of healthcare has done, and keep on adding it up. We are good stewards of the budget. We threw out a lot of scenarios last week. It is all available publicly online to look at. I'd encourage people who want the facts to check the real data. In many scenarios, the schools could have possibly had more money. We're living within confines of whatever statutory agreement we bilaterally sign with the council. But going forward, we've got to do something a little different. And that's, I think, the reality that both bodies hit last Thursday. I'd also like to echo Mr. Anderson's words. We're at a point in our society where platitudes and thoughts and words are meaningless. I actually worked with a gentleman who made a conscious decision in the last week to retire. He's gonna give back for the next five years. And that, in my opinion, is the difference between a society and a great society. And we seem to have lost that in our nation with the amount of people willing to give back and get involved. So I would just reach out to everybody tonight and say, get involved in our community, and let's make Manassas great. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Wyman Kiefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I know we have a great agenda tonight, and everybody's really reflected so many thoughts that have been on my mind. I have to say, a shining star in another dark week in our schools across the country. Seeing the leaders here, the student leaders that we spotlight or try to spotlight regularly keeps us all going during these times. I too am so thrilled that our school resource officers and our school security officers are here with us tonight. I happen to be here this every year in May when it's Police Week. I am a proud wife of an officer. I've had the opportunity through these tragedies to talk with my husband about what would you do? You know, how would you react? And we've just been able to really think about, what if that happens in our community? And how horrible of a thing is that? So I applaud all of you for the work you do. It's hard work. You look at the signs in our kids. We have to look for their mental well-being in this crazy world we live in. You do it every day. You do it very well. And in fact, it's inspired my husband to consider the next few years of his career in thinking about becoming a school resource officer. So I applaud you. I applaud all of the hard work that goes into it, the teachers that put their lives on the line when these horrible things happen. It's a true sense of community even in tragedy. So thank you. Thank you for being here. And thank you, Mr. Anderson. You couldn't, nobody could have said it better. Thank you.
All right. Finally, me. First, thanks for all the remarks. Mr. Anderson, your remarks were right on point, and lots of great points made tonight. I have some prepared remarks, but before I get into my prepared remarks, I have some unprepared remarks, and that's for the officers here. One of them I know pretty well. You all put your lives on the line for us, and we can't repay you for that. As has been expressed here, we thank you for that. We know it's not easy. You know, Kristen's married to a police officer. A lot of us have officers in our family, and we really appreciate what you do. And one thing that, you know, we don't talk about, which is great here, but I'm gonna bring it up anyway, is that throughout the nation, especially the last few years, we've seen a lot of discord between officers and some of the communities they police. We don't see that here. I think part of it is because we have so many folks who went to our school system, are engaged, and know our community. But we also have great folks who engage our kids, even if they're not from here, that make sure that they know the folks in our community. And that's made us be a community which is, I'm proud to live in, and which we should all be proud of. And we should not neglect that fact because we don't have, you know, controversy. Say, oh, well, you know, things are okay. We should applaud that, because obviously, you all are doing a great job. So we can't ever thank you enough for putting your lives on the line for us, but I truly thank you and applaud you for the work you do, because it is important, and it is appreciated. And we can't say it enough. So thank you. Not my prepared remarks. Since our last school board meeting two weeks ago, I've had the opportunity to visit our schools and attend a number of activities, including the Osborne SCA Officer Installation Ceremony. The SCA were the folks who were here earlier. And that was adeptly organized by Mrs. Albrecht and Mrs. Weaver, who are both here tonight. And the awards ceremony, retirement recognition ceremony, which was put together by our HR staff, and I see Ms. Wingfield's here tonight, so thank your staff for that ceremony. They did a great job. And I attended, and it's funny, I use the same words that Ms. Seberg did, an awesome end-of-the-year chorus concert in the direction of Ms. Easley at Osborne. All of my kids were in chorus and center stage. My wife and I sang in college. We love music, and these kids brought it. And they not only brought it, she's brought a dancing component to it, so they have show choir as well. And even the choirs, like Eclipse and Men's Choir, who don't usually dance, move as well. And for those of you who don't sing, trying to sing and move at the same time is kind of difficult, but they do it with grace and style. So I applaud those students. I applaud Ms. Easley, the finance department. They're really excellent. I'm not just saying it to say it. If you ever look at their YouTube videos, they're good. You should check it out. So congratulations to them for a special performance. Now, on another note, I want to briefly note that over the past couple of weeks, I have seen or heard seen or heard an unusual amount of negative, and in some cases, offensive comments about our school system and our recent selection of our new superintendent. And I've heard a few things expressed which are simply not true. As an attorney, I am extremely cognizant and appreciative of the need for vigorous discourse and debate to reach decisions. Healthy disagreement is essential to both our democracy and in our school system. However, it's problematic when our discourse is untrue and goes outside the bounds of reasoned debate and differences of opinion. Some of the animus expresses disturbing, and though it's minimal, it still impacts our community. Mr. Albrecht on occasion has correctly said that all politicians say they support education, however, they don't always put their money where their mouths are, and that's very true. Conglently, almost everyone in our community that speaks publicly says they want to do what's best for the kids, but their actions don't always match up. And though it is definitely only a small, very small minority of people, a little animus can create exponential toxicity. As a counterbalance to this, I thought about the royal wedding. You may say, it's strange, but I watched it. Yeah, I did. I watched it with my wife. I liked it. I watched it on Saturday. And I know at least one person, Ms. Wing, watched it, because I follow them on social media, and they tweeted about it, but I won't call her out. Anyhow, there were many great things about the wedding, the cellist, the music, the elegance. Okay, I'll stop there. But what really struck me about the wedding was that there was an overwhelming theme of love and compassion. If we, as a society and as a community, could carry ourselves and have our interactions governed by love and compassion, we will all be better off, and we will truly be operating in the best interests of our kids. I can confidently say that this board, our administrators, our teachers, and our staff are devoted to doing their best for our students. I encourage everyone in the community to do the same. Thanks for listening. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move the City of Manassas School Board to adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, 7-0.
Mr. Chair. Citizen comments?
Oh, that's the second time I did that. Thank you. I will digress a bit. Are there any citizen comments? Seema? Okay, thanks. Moving on. Moving on. Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Next up, discussion agenda. The first item is personnel, the MCPS Employee Engagement Survey.
K-12 Insights conducted the Division's second employee engagement survey. It was open to employees from February 20th to March 13th. Dr. Alicia Martinez is here tonight to discuss the results from the survey. Afterwards, I will discuss the Division's next steps.
Good evening, everyone. Chairman Williams, Dr. McGurk, members of the board. Wonderful to be with you on behalf of K-12 Insight this evening to walk you through the most current results for the Employee Engagement Survey. And before I jump in, I would like to just say, one of the major takeaways from conducting this study was the tremendous growth that you've had in many areas across all of the dimensions in the survey. And in my near four years at K-12 Insight, I've never seen a report where you've seen an item go down. I've never seen it happen, and it happened on this report, where you either sustained or improved. And I just want to say, it's our privilege to be a part of this wonderful work going on here in Manassas City Public Schools and to report out on it. So that was one key takeaway. So just keep up the great work. With that, we'll just, oop, it has a little bit of a little tricky thing there. So table of contents here, this is a new piece attached to this year's report, just to help you kind of go through. If you have any particular questions as we go through the report, feel free to ask them at any time. So we know measuring engagement is very, very important in the work that we do across the country. The more engaged your staff are, the more productive they'll be, the more likely they'll be to go the extra mile and really put forth their best effort. So measuring employee engagement is very important, especially in the field of education. This report shows this year's findings, but every single table that's included shows the comparison from this year to last year. So what I was mentioning about not seeing a decline, you're going to see that evident on all of the comparison tables, and it makes it much easier to really look at the data. One key piece that we did incorporate is we took feedback that your division's staff provided to us last year, saying, this was great, but it was really hard to know who we were talking about in the survey. So we really appreciated that feedback. It came through Dr. McGurk and members of the leadership team in conveying that to us. So we wanted to make it as easy as possible for staff to know who they were referring to. So throughout the survey, we piped in if they were talking about a principal or their direct supervisor. And we even provided additional definitions to make it as easy as possible. So it makes the survey findings even more valid, because people knew exactly who they were talking about. Any questions so far? Okay. So the study's design, we have our overall engagement, then we measured the same drivers as last year. There were six major components, ranging from shared values through career growth and training opportunities. And as you know, as we've typically done here in Manassas City Public Schools, breaking it down by different respondent groups is really important to see maybe where those comparisons and differences may exist, if at all. So some of the key insights here that I would want to walk you through is that we saw an increase in participation, which was wonderful. Eight percentage point increase in participation. So typically, you see that happening when staff see that their supervisor or principal are actually using the results to drive change, they feel compelled to participate. We also could have heard from people that didn't feel inclined last year to participate but wanted to this year. So we did see that increase in participation. Three in four of your staff members, 75%, are either engaged or highly engaged. That means that over those nine items, they gave a 3.5 or higher. And 3.5 at K-12 Insight is our baseline. So 75% of your staff are either there or all the way to the top at 5.0. The highest increases in staff were really found with teachers, which is tremendous. I was a former teacher. So 12 percentage point increase there, as well as with your central office staff. So kudos to all of the central office leaders, your leadership, Dr. McGurk. It was very evident here, an 18 percentage point increase with those two particular participant groups. We did provide some insight there at the last bullet, really convening those workshops with department leaders. They certainly don't need to be led by us. I mean, there's fantastic work happening here, but really taking a moment to take a step back and saying, we're doing great, here are our results, now let's really figure out where we should further focus. Or maybe say, hey, this worked, let's go in a different direction to make sure we can sustain in the other areas. So those workshops can certainly be conducted by us, but there's very capable staff here to be able to lead those workshops. But I certainly recommend them to keep this energy going. We talked a little bit about why we measure engagement. So in terms of participation, you'll see here, we broke it down by the number of responses by each position type. You saw an increase across each of those respective areas, ranging from central office through teachers. The participation by school site, you also saw increases across each of the school sites, with the exception of Mayfield Intermediate, which had just two people less than last year. Baldwin Intermediate is a new school site, so we don't have comparison data yet for them. But should this study be implemented next year, you would have comparison data to look at participation compared to this year. And then here, you see the response rate by department, ranging from Health Services to Student Services. And one other piece of participation data, you see the respondents by years of service here. This is really important to look at, to just make sure that the group that you're hearing from is varied. And what you see here is there was a bit of an uptick in the participants who've been with the Division for more than 10 years compared to last year, which is really great. So in terms of overall engagement, you'll see here that there was a slight increase in those who were either engaged or highly engaged compared to last year. It went up by eight percentage points. And you saw a significant drop from those who were less engaged compared to last year. Now, I'm not inferring correlation or causation, or saying that those who moved from less engaged are now suddenly highly engaged, but you're seeing what we want to see happen, where you're seeing less folks who are in that less engaged category. And we want to continue to see that particular group go down. Right now, it's one in four. When you look at engagement by school level, the one piece that I really wanted to point out here as a researcher, is looking at the tremendous gains that were made. The most pronounced change was at the high school level. You saw a 21 percentage point increase in those staff members who participated in that engaged and highly engaged category. So whatever's happening at Osborne is looking wonderful. Tremendous gain there. And then we see the breakdown here by school site. I think something to impress upon school leaders there is, we can't say it's apples to apples from year to year. There may be different participants, maybe different teachers that are coming on board, or those that didn't take it last year that took it this year. But this provides helpful information to a school leader to say, well, how am I doing relative to last year? Am I trending in the right direction? We don't have last year's data for Baldwin, obviously. Any questions? All right. And I, you all want to get to the really good stuff, where it shows all the comparison data. And then we're looking at engagement by position type here. The highest gains, as you remember from my earlier remarks, were in the areas, position type by central office and teachers. This slide is pretty powerful. You'll see that each of these engagement items had an increase compared to last year. And keeping in mind that that 3.5 is what we would consider, you know, good. And you only have two items that are just shy of 3.5 at the very bottom. I would feel comfortable referring a good friend to work for MCPS, and I see professional growth and long-term career opportunities with MCPS. Are the only two items that fall slightly below that 3.5. Yes?
You pointed this out in your summary. I want you to highlight it more, because I think what I heard you say is, I'm engaged with what I do, but I see no future here. That seems to me to be a diametric opposite ends. And then when you have disaggregated your data, and you're only looking at people with 10 and more years' experience, the reality is, in today's work life, it's the 35-year work life. So everybody ought to see a future greater than 10. If we had a population, we're looking at more than 20, more than 25, you could say, okay, they're in the twilight of a career, they don't care about the future. So I'm a little confused with how we're sourcing the data and what it really is trying to say.
Sure. So all of the data that are being presented are always at the aggregate. It's not necessarily just with that group of participants that are working for the Division more than 10 years. And I think you raise a great point. I mean, as a former educator myself, in many cases, some of the leadership roles are either as a grade-level chair, or principal, or maybe in another position. But I literally just had focus groups at a neighboring Division, and we really unpacked that. What does it mean to have a long-term career opportunity? And for some, sir, it's expanded training and skills. For others, it's about really having that ownership on a project. For others, it's about having additional salary and increases there. So I think one recommendation that I would share with you all is really unpacking what it means for a Manassas City Public Schools employee to have long-term career opportunities here. Because you can certainly be engaged in your work and have the same title for 35 years, but it's growing, and it's changing, and it's having additional opportunities to grow. And that looks very different. When I asked a focus group of 15 people, there were somewhat different answers for every single individual. So just something to throw out there. But point well taken. And then you just see the disaggregation in each of the slides that follow, that show the full breakdown for this year's data. So as we move to the engagement drivers, what you'll see here is the overall average across all of the items included within that particular dimension. So shared values, really understanding what their role is, what the mission of the Division is, is very clear to people, 3.85. Whereas when you really unpack what feedback and recognition means, it's not that far off from the top dimension here. It's 3.46, but it happens to be the lowest ranking dimension when looking across all So now, all of the slides that follow, members of the board and the community, you'll see that these show the data from last year compared to this year. Anything that's in green shows that it had an increase in the overall percentage when looking at the overall level. So last year, for example, 61% of staff either strongly agree to agree that they feel comfortable sharing their ideas and opinions with their direct supervisor or principal. Now, it's closer to three and four, 73%, which reflected a 12 percentage point increase compared to last year. When you look at leadership, you'll see the items here from top to bottom. The highest increase, 10 percentage point within this particular dimension, is Division Leaders' Actions Are Consistent With Their Words. That was the item that had the highest gain in this particular dimension. And then this shows the full breakdown for the items this year. For Communication, there's a 12 percentage point increase in two of the items. My direct supervisor or principal effectively communicates important issues that affect me, and my direct supervisor or principal is willing to listen to new ideas. Nearly 80% indicated that they agree with that or strongly agree. There were some wonderful things happening in some of those interactions. And then Feedback and Recognition, while this was the lowest overall driver, as you may recall, there were some tremendous gains that are worth noting. Feeling that they're recognized for their accomplishments had a 13 percentage point increase, and there's an 11 percentage point increase in the following item. MCPS Recognizes Employees For Their High-Quality Work And Accomplishments. Any questions?
Have you ever done the analysis of, because I said several of the questions, my direct supervisor versus division leadership? And I know, having worked in several different large companies, there's always the headquarters versus us that do the work mentality, you know? It turns into we and them. Did you look at an analysis of that? Because I mean, some of them, division things look a little lower, but that tends to always happen, right?
Correct. Yep. And that's found in the literature. You're able to talk really well about your congressman, or we were talking a little bit about local politicians, but you feel less connected with those who are, I don't want to get political, but in a higher role, correct? So it's the same thing in education. You can speak very, like, with hands-on information and experiences with your direct colleagues, with your direct supervisor, but the principal, or maybe a superintendent or leadership team, you have limited interaction. So that's something that we find in the literature. But to answer your question about the survey, we certainly had a whole dimension dedicated to district leadership. Some of those items are embedded in shared values and other places. But great point. Any other questions on that?
Dr. McGurk?
Yes, Dr. McGurk.
So some of the items that you're bringing up, Mr. Albrecht, is something that I've talked with K-12 about. When we work, we're working very hard on our communication and how much our staff knows what's going on. So for instance, when they talk about division leaders clearly explaining the reasons behind decisions on key issues, when the teachers had completed the survey, nothing had taken place this year for a key issue. And I think that in the future, we need to be, the question needs to be more discreet. For instance, if we'd taken the assessment a little bit later, we could have found out about how they felt about our communication on start times and those things, because that came afterwards. And so we're measuring something that I'm not sure that the respondents are clear on. I think that another one is, when you consider the morale within the school or the morale within the Division, you work in your building, and if you make a comment about your Division, it's really going to be hearsay, because you don't work in that. So one of the recommendations that I've talked with K-12, and I've talked with the cabinet about, is that as we look at questions next year, because we have a good benchmark now, we need to really bring some principals or even the superintendent's advisory group around the table to structure some of these questions where we can draw more meaning, especially like the professional learning. We now have professional learning communities, committees in each school. We have two at the Division level, one for support staff and one for certified staff. But the frustration was, at the Division level, we barely moved that compass. And so I think that there's a lot of discussion there, and I think if we work with staff the way we did on the Salary and Benefits Committee, with really having the committee set up, and they say, we have these questions, we want to understand it, and we bring to them what they're asking, and then we talk through it, we may see even greater changes and clearer responses even next year.
Yeah. And the only thing I would add to what Dr. McGurk remarked- And the only thing I would add to what Dr. McGorick remarked on is, you know, maybe putting together a document that says, we, we listened to you, and some of the things that resulted from the survey were X. Really helping participants make that connection. You know, over the summer, we announced X, Y, and Z, certain decisions that were made. Just helping people make better, make those connections, I think, would be something worth considering. And then, oops, sorry about that. Work environment. The highest gain there was a 13 percentage point increase in the item, I have sufficient independence in my work. Dr. McGorick remarked on this item here relative to morale. We do see that there was an increase in those who either strongly agreed or agreed about there being high staff morale within their department as well as at the division level compared to last year. The dimension that had some of those smaller gains was in the area of career growth and training opportunities. You'll see here that while some of the percentages are fairly good, you know, almost half, if not more, of your staff are either strongly agreeing or agreeing, there may be some opportunities to really make some good headway in this particular area as you plan for the summer and into the upcoming school year. I know there's wonderful work already underway, but this, just looking at the data, suggests that this had a little bit of smaller gains compared to the other dimensions within the So as we close for today, we do ask staff members what word best describes how they feel about the work that they're doing. And you'll see some new words that staff are indicating that they feel challenged and satisfied and content with the work that they're doing. And there is no, the word stressed didn't make the top 10 for this current school year. So congratulations on, on that. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Wingfield unless there are any other questions from you all.
Are there any questions? Comments? I do have one question. First of all, thank you for what you did. This is very helpful information for us. The 10 most used words, is there a benchmark nationally that you benchmark it against to see how we compare? Because that would be something that's...
Yes, there is that information, and I'm happy to send an updated report to Mrs. Wingfield to everyone's attention. I will say, just a, what's that word? It's a teaser. Overwhelmed is the number one word found nationally. So you all are not alone on that. But I'm happy to add that into the report and send it to Mrs. Wingfield.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
The division's next steps will include the following. Continue school and level department goal setting related to the engagement survey, survey for the school year 1819. Continue school-level department culture and climate committees. And continue school-level and department professional development committees for professional development for instructional and support staff.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
I have one. We touched on overwhelmed and frustrated. I'm sure that's, no, you don't have to come. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ramble. Okay? If I say something wrong, then come up and tell me I'm wrong. Everybody else does, right? I, I think that's too high of a number, people that are putting overwhelmed and frustrated, but I also think it's the nature of the beast. Education is frustrating and overwhelming, and it seems to be more and more every day across the nation. And I don't think we're unique in that situation. It is nice to know that overwhelmed numbers have come down. Frustrated numbers went up a little bit. And I think we need to continue to work on those sort of things, but, and never be satisfied that they've just come down, but also realize that, that we are in an industry that is very stressful, very frustrating, and very overwhelming, as, as well as good, challenging, challenged, satisfied. Our teachers and our staff run the gamut of emotions from day to day, you know, from what I see. They can be very much overwhelmed one day, and then that kid does something special the next day, and they're, they're very happy, and they're very pleased, and they're very satisfied with what they did. Dr. McGorick, these numbers, the improvement is because of you and your staff from top to bottom, and we appreciate your help. Thank you very much for making us a better division. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments? And actually, I was going to add, the fact that we went through this reflection is an excellent way for us to glean what we're actually doing in our community with our, with teachers, because it's easy to say we care, but it's hard to do the hard work and do it. So thank you for doing that. We appreciate it. And thank you all for that. Next item, 2019, 2020 school calendar.
Good evening. Chairman Wines, members of board, Superintendent McGorick. This evening, I'm here to present to you again two versions of the draft 2019, 2020 calendar with survey results. The last time I presented, a few weeks ago, after that presentation, we posted public surveys to gain input from our parents, students, and community. As I stated last time, I'm sharing the code from the state. This is where they, they state the requirement for a post-labor day start for students of a, of a school system. But they also state how school boards can use a waiver to, for that requirement based upon good cause. One of the criteria for good cause is a school system's average annual closed day number of any five days during the last 10-year period. Looking at it over the last 10 years, our annual average days closed due to weather emergencies is 7.6. The state has approved for us to, to round that up to eight, so we do meet the good cause criteria for a waiver for a pre-labor day start. Currently, our calendars have been based upon the first day that the Princeville County School System starts. They do use their annual closed days to meet the good cause, and they geographically surround us. So we have to start on their first day with our calendar if we choose to do that. The 2019, 2020 calendar, using our own good cause average, snow day closer, average, allows us to start before the Princeville County calendar. We presented two, two versions in the survey. A version A, which proposed starting five days earlier or a week earlier than we traditionally do, and ending for students by the end of May. The version B is our traditional calendar, starting the same day, a week before Labor Day as the county, and ending in June for students and teachers. We sent out 1,100 staff survey invitations, 3,300 English survey invitations to parents, about 1,200 Spanish survey links to parents who indicated that their primary language for communication is, is in Spanish. We posted links on our website for the public to respond. We had a 13% response rate from parents, about 605 responded to the survey, and staff had a 47% response rate. And I mentioned this just to keep in context the results of this survey. Again, this survey reflects the opinions of people who responded to it and not necessarily our entire population. Looking at the results of the survey, version A, just to remind you, version A is the earlier start with the earlier ending for students in May and staff. The staff results showed that 47% of staff responded in favor of version A, and 53% responded in favor of version B. We see the, the contrary with the parent guardian response. They preferred version A over version B. We did have 50 students respond through our, our public link to the survey. 70% of those 50 students preferred version A over version B. We had 53 people respond to the public survey link and identified themselves as community members. And as you see, they were the favorite version B. And we did have six people respond that did not self-identify their role, and of those six, they preferred version A. When looking at the results aggregated together, version A has 52% favorability and version B, 48%.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir.
I hope I made it clear for you.
You read my mind.
Well, we tried.
Taking a look at student and parent survey comment themes, people who chose version A, these are some of the themes that came out of their comments, that they choose, they chose version, version A for the instructional benefits. They felt, another theme was, it would be easier on families in regards to their vacations and daycare needs and other items along those lines. They liked version A, but they also expressed need or want for Veterans Day to be a closed day. Remember, in the version A, we didn't have that represented. Another theme, they liked starting earlier. They were concerned about summer camps and other programs because those camps and programs in this county are set upon the county's school calendar. And they did prefer having a student holiday versus two early release days for parent-teacher conferences. They would like to have one of those days completely available for conferences. Students' parents for version B, again, they, they said it was easier on families for vacations and daycare needs. They liked the alignment with the county school system calendar. They did prefer a post-labor day start. Some of them did. And they did not prefer an earlier start than one week prior to Labor Day. Again, concerns about the camps and programs. And in version A, or version B, they preferred a winter break, can't see it there, through January 3rd of 2020, but in version B, it ended on the 1st for that version. Looking at staff survey comment themes, staff members who favored A, again, the theme was that they felt instruction benefited children. They did prefer Veterans Day off. They also preferred the Monday after spring break to be included. They mentioned, they had comments about professional day and teacher workdays, having somebody at the front end on version A, and other comments, typical comments, why do we have, why do we have them in the survey, on the calendars? And then again, another theme about the student holiday and parent-teacher conferences. Staff who chose version B, they were, the theme, better alignment with the county calendar, easier in regards to vacations and daycare, they appreciated the Veterans Day as a holiday. Again, the comments about professional days and teacher workdays, and they felt version A started too early. And again, about the student holiday and the parent-teacher conferences. So the academic committee met and reviewed these results, and the committee had some recommended changes to version A and to version B. So first, looking at version A, they heard the theme on both slides about the student holiday for parent-teacher conferences and asked that that be added in. So we added that in. The way we compensated for that was to change March 16th, which was a teacher workday, and move that over into September for that student holiday. The committee also felt they needed to add Veterans Day back on to version A, and we did that. But taking a, changing the last day for school students to May 29th, we gained an instructional day there to cover for that loss of instructional day in November. And then we also had to change the last teacher workday to June 1st. In version B, we added the student holiday for parent-teacher conferences. That did change last day for students to June 11th, which then pushed the last day for staff to June 12th. And to compensate for that, I had to take a day off the front end for the calendar for the teacher workday. So that changed their start day back a day to the following week. And that concludes my findings.
Thank you. I'll start with Ms. Seberg of the academic committee. Do you have any input, Ms. Seberg? And I'll take other comments as well.
Well, we're lucky that we're small, and we're, I think it's a good idea to reach out to our families and to our staff to ask for input on this because other people think of things that we may not. Sometimes we get lost in the details. So even though it's still very close, I think the changes that we've made honoring Veterans Day and changing the student holiday, I think those are good moves, whichever calendar is decided on.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Kiefer?
Well, I guess they're comments but questions. First of all, the survey didn't help us. But thank you for the effort. It's a tough decision. Schedules are always one of the least favorite decisions. So in the comments, there was, in both cases, folks felt there was better alignment with the county. And Mr. Albrecht and I serve on the, the joint school boards for the Governor's School in particular. There's other shared services with the county. Can you just clarify which schedule, if, if both of them are good with the counties, calendars as we know them now?
Version B would be almost, well, close alignment with the county calendar if they were to stay with their current practices. Or version A, we would start five days earlier than the county if they stayed with their current practice. Our programs that we share, we have looked into, and for example, the Abrazi program, the nursing program, all those programs end before the last day of school in either of those versions, so that we would be okay there. We, you know, we'd have those students do programs back at their classes and so forth, activities back at the school, off days. And at the front end, you know, we'd have five days prior to those programs starting. Those students could work on their, their studies at the high school prior to that starting and preparing, you know, jumpstart in those classes before the other programs began at the county area.
Excuse me, Dr. McGorick.
Just to add some feedback to what Mr. Line was talking about, one of the things that's really hard with the Governor's School is they start at the same time as we start school. And it's the, for our juniors, it's very, the stress rate for the first six weeks is monumental. So when we were talking about this in Cabinet, one of the things that we, that we discussed was the fact that our students, having that week ahead to prepare, whether it's ROTC, the nursing program, or anything, they can get their Osborne stuff in place, and then as they move and they go to these other, other sites, they're, they're better prepared, and they're not trying to work on two locations and two sets of requirements at the same time. So it was actually quite beneficial. You mentioned the, you mentioned, you mentioned one program, but the Governor, the Governor's School also ends early before that time as well. And then there was the special education. You want to talk about how those services that we already run counter to in some of those areas, correct?
Correct, we do. And with the regional special ed program, for example, we have students who attend Pace, Independent Hill, and other programs. They would follow the county pro, the calendar because those programs are actually in the county system on their, on their schools, property, and so they would follow those calendars. And transportation would follow those, those dates, those start dates and end dates.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask one?
Yes.
Sorry. So obviously, all of our end goal is to have students at the center, and the decision to hopefully be the, the best thing for the kids, which is why we're doing this, this exercise. A question on the earlier schedule, because I think about, one of the best things for students is to ensure we're able to have enough time to get teachers in place. So the recruitment of teachers with the earlier schedules, is there any concern, or have you all kind of talked about, would that be a struggle for the recruitment of, of new teachers starting earlier and having them report by August 1? No more. Okay.
The version A, this earlier start, it, it's only a five-day earlier start for staff than the private and students, we just bumped it up a week. The first transition summer will be shorter, but as far as recruiting, that's a year-round activity.
Sure.
We just, it's not something we just do at the end of the, you know, it's ongoing all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Albrecht?
I'll just make some observations. And certainly, I'm an advocate for local control, and I think more than once I have vilified the Hayannis Kings Dominion Act, which is a tremendous overreach on the part of government. But Ms. Kiefer's right. We're doing this for academics and what's best for children. And as I look at programs across the state, we have children potentially starting school 19, 20, August in the early program. I know in parts of the Commonwealth, they're starting well in advance of that because they're really worried about winter roads and other kind of things that, again, affect children. So I appreciated hearing the comments about special ed and shared programs and the Governor's School, you know, nursing programs, those things that we have that are shared that would either put our children at a disadvantage, or as Dr. McGorick said, potentially there are things that are affiliated with this that give our children an advantage, which are things that are affiliated with this that give our children an advantage, which is the right reason why we should be doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a question, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is simply a comment. And in light of the survey we just had with the staff, and we're, we're upside down, what staff wishes and what is probably best for the students, and it's just, I don't, that imbalance is, makes this very, very tough in my mind. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Ms. Demaria?
Thank you, sir. We keep saying it's five days. Isn't it seven days difference? The 12th, new teachers report on the 12th or on the 1st of August?
You got it? Okay.
So it is that, is that?
What are you measuring?
Math is not my.
Better to when children start.
It's the 5th or the 1st.
Well, as far as recruitment and stuff like that, it's, and then the children start?
On version B, which is our traditional calendar, with the recommended changes come out of committee, the first day for teachers to report would be August 19th. And on version A.
August 19th?
Are these different then? Have we changed these?
With the, with the committee changes?
It shows the 16th. All teachers report.
Right, that was.
He's got committee changes.
Oh, we didn't do that on this version? Thank you for making me look stupid.
I am so sorry.
Is it, which one, this one? What's this one?
This is my markup version.
So yes, but let me, let me, let me address your questions.
All right.
It is a good question.
Thanks.
The students would start. The students start five days earlier, so maybe I'm miswrote. The students start five days earlier. Staff would start on version A with the recommendation, recommendations out of committee on August 7th. In version A, on version B, with the recommended changes, staff would report the first day on the 19th. They still have their flex days before that, but that'd be the day they would report.
The 7th versus the 19th?
Correct.
Any other questions? Mr. O'Hanlon.
Could you bring up one of the calendars again?
Make sure it's the right one.
It doesn't matter.
Make sure.
For my.
There we go. Do you want version A or just, just the days? Okay. You got it, Alba? Just version A. That's fine. Or B, whichever you got there.
Or C.
Slide it to November, please, on the left side. Isn't, isn't the Thanksgiving the week after that? I think it's on the wrong week.
It is. Yes, we need to fix that. It is. Thank you.
Oh, sure. He's right.
Thank you, sir. You're all right.
I missed that.
Yeah, so it got by all of us.
Right. Any other comments? Before I come in at the next steps, when do you, would cabinet like to see us? Okay. So what I want to propose is that, I think that that's fine for next board meeting, but to ensure that the public is aware of the changes. So I'm not sure if it's best, and I'll leave it up to you, is it best just to post it online or you think it's best to send a blast out saying there are these slight changes that we're transparent? But just so folks are clear about it, I think next meeting is doable.
So what you're asking us to do is the board, the consensus of the board is to adopt these changes, place them on calendar A and B, and then we can send that out to parents. That's what he's asking for us to do. So the old, the, the first calendar A and B will disappear and we'll have these revised versions with an explanation on their, whether revisions are, so they'll understand. I think that's a great idea. And then we can also say that any comments that they wish to have, would you want them to come speak at the next board meeting?
That would be great. I think that would be helpful to us to have, maybe I don't get any comments, but at least we're being transparent, as my colleague mentioned next to me.
And this is two years out. So if, you know, so if you want to even wait till the next board meeting after that, should you hear something that you want to think some more about. The one thing that I think is powerful in this, in this, on this calendar is first that it's nothing new. Falkir County already operates under this calendar. But what, what's heartbreaking to me is that no matter what, in the month of January, when we come back and we're trying to close the semester out, we're out of school. And then when we get towards the last week of January, we finally switch over to the new semester, and we're still out of school usually with snow. We have fewer days second semester. We start later in the beginning of the school year, and our students that are, that we want to take AP tests, or we want them to do dual enrollment and those kinds, they're not getting the same amount of time that their, that their peers are getting. And our students work very, very hard, and I find most of our students pressure themselves an awful lot to the extent that first semester, we couldn't get it finished because of all the snow. I actually had a student come up to me, burst into tears and said, please don't school, close the school anymore. I can't get, we can't get first semester done. And I, I just want us to think about that. I know family holidays are really important, and I know how the first, when we swing into this the first year, that summer's not going to be fun. We're giving notice two years out so parents can plan, and we may have fewer students on the first day of school. I don't know. But after we swing through that first, that first initial year, it's going to be something that's fair to our kids. When they, you know, when, when colleges are asking for their score, for their grades in January, our staff won't be pressured trying to get it finished. And for our children that move, which some do over the winter holiday, they'll be able to start with grades at the first of their semester. It's a win-win for kids. And for adults, it will not, we, we won't be excited about it in the beginning, but once we get used to it, we're creatures of habit, it will all get better.
Thank you. Any other comments before I close this up? If not, thank you for your work on this, Mr. Lyon, staff, and also the committee. And again, like I spoke about earlier with the survey of teachers, it's very important to gauge our community because the best feedback you get is by having the most voices at the table. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. Next on the agenda, grade 5 through 9 health resource adoption. Dr. Kramp.
Right, good evening. Chairman Williams, Vice Chairwoman Kiefer, Dr. McGorick, members of the board. I am very pleased to be with you this evening to share with you our process and our recommendations for the grades 5 through 9 health resources. And I would like to publicly thank Mr. Ray Massey, who's here this evening, as well as Mr. Steve Schultz for their assistance in this process. There were multiple resources reviewed, and I've listed those there for you and the grade levels that were assigned to those particular resources. Six vendors in all were considered. The recommended health resources are as follows. For grade 9, Pearson. Grades 7 and 8, McGraw-Hill, Glencoe. And grades 5, 6, HealthSmart, Virginia. The total adoption estimated cost is as follows. The 5th and 6th grade resource selected is a free resource, so no charge there, which is fabulous. Grade 7 and 8, $93,996.60. And grade 9, $51,789.05. For a total of $145,785.65. I do just want to point out that grade 10 does not need a health resource. The majority of time in grade 10 is spent with driver's ed, and the existing health resource and other free online supports that are available to them are adequate to meet their needs. The teachers were all involved in this process, all the teachers at all levels, and they worked together to establish the evaluation rubric that you see on the screen. And this was the rubric that all teachers used when they evaluated each resource that was appropriate for their grade level. The grade 9 teachers that were involved in the process are listed there, and I thank them for their time and efforts. Just to reiterate, the resources that were reviewed at grade 9, and then the resource selected was Pearson. Grade 7 and 8 teachers, this is the full staff at NETS. We have one teacher who left January, February, and so there's a long-term sub in the fourth position. So all three teachers that are full-time staff at NETS were part of the process as well. And they reviewed five resources for their level, and their selected resource was McGraw-Hill, Glencoe. And then the 5, 6 teachers involved are listed there. That is all but one. She's retiring and so did not participate in the process to evaluate future resources. They also evaluated 5, and their selection was HealthSmart, Virginia. All of the resources were available for review at central office for the public from March 19th through April 13th. We sent notification via the app twice, and it was also rolling on the division website. Community members could provide input through either an email directly to me or through the Let's Talk feature, and no feedback was received. Just a little bit more information about the estimated cost. This is grade 9. Again, they selected the Pearson resource. The total cost for books is $13,645.50. The total cost for additional digital, digital subscriptions is $35,986.50. And then a video series as well. With Pearson, a digital subscription comes with each textbook, and additional digital subscriptions are recommended so that every student has one. 150 total books are recommended by the staff. This will allow for three class sets of the actual textbooks. And future year's cost would just be for replacement or any enrollment growth that we may experience. The total cost here at the bottom does include shipping and handling. I do want to point that out because if your number doesn't add up totally from the top to the bottom, it's because the shipping and handling is included down here in the total. So the total for grade 9 for the Pearson adoption is $51,789.05. Grade 7 and 8, their selected resource was McGraw-Hill and Glencoe. With McGraw-Hill and Glencoe, digital subscriptions are purchased separate from the textbook. They don't include one when you order a textbook. So the recommendation is for 100 textbooks to be purchased. This allows for two class sets of 50 bucks. The 7th and 8th grade curriculum is included all in one book, so they will share that and just use the appropriate materials as needed. And again, we will purchase a digital subscription for all students at this level so that they have access. And future year's cost would simply be enrollment growth or replacement. And the total for grade 7, 8 is $93,996.60. Grade 5 and 6, again, they reviewed many resources and selected HealthSmart, Virginia. They felt like that best met their needs. All teacher and student resources, lessons and activities are digital and they are free, so they can all have access to that. It is instructional resources for social, emotional, physical, and environmental health. And HealthSmart, Virginia are lessons created as part of a consortium with the Virginia Department of Education, the Prince William Network, and the Virginia Department of Health. So again, just to remind you, the total cost for the proposed adoption for grades 5 through 9 is $145,700, $145,785.65. And I did want to reflect for you that in the 18, 19 curriculum and instruction approved budget, we allocated $240,000 for the purchase of health resources, and that was based on initial quotes that we received throughout the process. Again, the total cost, I've read several times, so I'm not going to read that again. But the difference under budget is $94,214.35. That's because some of our quotes ended up coming in in final stages a little less than we anticipated, and grades 5 and 6 selected a free resource. So that saved us a substantial amount of funds. And that concludes the presentation about our process and our proposed resources.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Kramp. Very comprehensive. We appreciate that. Any questions? Ms. Maria?
I ask this every year, and I hear from different teachers, maybe not health teachers. Ray, maybe you can help me out. Do we use these books? Are we buying books just because we've always bought books? And if we're using these books and we're $95,000 under budget, that's wonderful.
Right.
But we're not doing something, and I need to ask this because I think, I hope I know the answer, otherwise we wouldn't be recommending this. Because people, it's out there that we don't, we buy all these textbooks and they just sit there in a corner and we don't use them.
Well, if Mr. Ray, Mr. Massey wants to address it, I'll let him. But I will let you know at the beginning of each of these committee groups that we get together for adoption of potential resources, we do talk about the fact that adoption and recommendation is not required. Part of the process is to look at resources, compare it with what currently exists, the things that they're using online that may already be available. And part of their decision could be, we don't recommend a resource because it's not necessary. And so I feel confident that the teachers involved in the process know best, and if they're indicating that they use and feel this, you know, that a resource is necessary, that's the recommendation they're making. And, you know, through multiple discussions and whatnot with them, I feel confident that they're actually using it. I mean, I would say yes, right, Mr. Massey? But.
That's the answer I wanted to hear, because I don't want to spend money on, you know.
Absolutely.
On something we don't need, but thank you very much.
I'm glad, Ms. Kiefer next, and I'll come back down this way.
Mine's a quick question, just because I think people may ask, and if you address it, I apologize.
That's okay.
So some will ask perhaps why, when we have tablets at the high school level, we would need nine-grade books?
Couple of different things. There are tablets for digital subscriptions, of course, and we want those kids utilizing those tablets and getting online. But different times, they may want to use a hard copy for different things within the classroom, different collaborative work. They may want to just actually be in the paper. We have students that have certain accommodations that may need a paper version as well versus an online version, and so just to have a combination of the two.
Dr. McGorick?
And if students don't have their, their device with them.
Correct.
We have the hardback copy.
We have a backup.
I'll back down this way. Ms. Seberg, do you have a question?
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say thank you. It's, I mean, I love the process that this goes through, and I too have confidence in our staff for making the decision on this. Thank you.
Down here, did I see another hand, one of the two of you? Okay. Just shaking your head. Okay. Where to stay engaged? This way. First, Mr. Albert.
Follow Mrs. Kiefer's question, which is, we talked about the 9th grade, and we have a one-to-one initiative at the high school. For 5, 6, 7, 8, we don't have that same initiative yet. We're focusing on digital learning. How's, how is that going to be implemented? I mean, because half the cost is in 7, 8 digital textbooks.
That's correct. I think you'll learn in Mr. Barrett's presentation coming up shortly, that while not one-to-one in terms of giving students an actual device to carry around, that there are ample computers at both of those buildings for students throughout the day in each class to have a computer of their own to access digital resources. Again, it's not a checkout system, but they are available for the students to use within their classrooms, really in a one-to-one kind of situation. Again, just not assigned.
So is then the license to a device? Or to a student?
To a student.
So it's a virtue, it's some, some kind, some kind of software as a service, so we have to buy all, okay?
We do.
Ms. O'Hanlon?
Just a question. Twice you said that a class set is 50 books. I'm just, I know we don't have any classes with 50 students. Why is a class set 50 books?
That's what the recommendation from.
The health classes and PE classes, there are 50 students in some of those classes.
At Mayfield. And at the high school. Students that push into different classes and those kinds of things, so numbers can go higher.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you. Thank you to the health teachers for, for doing this. I know it's challenging. With mental health especially being, you know, a big issue, these teachers deal with that issue as well. So keep that in mind. But thank you.
Thank you. You got it.
Next up, Mr. Barrett, FY 2018 updates, technology and communication.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman. Members of the board, Dr. McGorick. Excited to present to you tonight the FY 2018 technology update, along with my colleague, Mr. Pedro Hernandez. Will be sharing part of this presentation. Also, I'd like to recognize Mr. Robert Sansone, Coordinator of Information Technology, President with us tonight. He certainly had a significant impact on, on the results here as well. Just a, just a few short bullets. We've had a change in our technology plan process at the state level. And so during the course of the school year, the, during the public education, they published a new state technology plan, and they. a new state technology plan and they, they changed the local requirements. And so local school divisions are no longer required to submit a technology plan for approval or even review anymore. Tech plan can, doesn't even have to be a technology plan, if you will. It can be consisted, made up of several different plans, for instance, professional development and some other ones, those facets. And they've changed the model now to where the superintendent just requires, is required to certify annually in the summer report, annual data collection process that, that we meet those technology requirements. Just to remind you, approximately two years ago at this May meeting, I stood before you and presented the FY seventeen, eighteen educational technology plan, which was adopted that June. And we've been working, using that as a strategic tool these past two years, guiding most of our decision-making processes and, and our, the way we utilize our technologies. And as a result of, of this change in the middle of the school year, we were informed by the VDOE in December of the finalized tech plan, did not give us ample time to get our technology advisory board together, our subcommittees, and really work a new plan. The recommendation of our board was that we would continue one additional year because our current goals, strategies, and objectives still comply with the, the state's new plan. And we would use the FY twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year to assemble those committees and revise and propose a new, a new tech plan. I'd be remiss if I didn't just mention, we're talking about budget earlier. As you can see in these other conversations, technology is pervasive in just about every facet of the educational process these days. And so in the FY nineteen adopted budget, there was over one-point-six million dollars worth of requests that came in through our technology work process that were not able to be funded. Just wanted to point out that approximately one-point-one million dollars of those were instructional requests. They came directly from the schools. More than nine-hundred thousand dollars was for additional hardware that, that we weren't able to fund. And along with that, there were three full FTE positions that were requested between my department and Mr. Hernandez's team as well that were not able to be funded as well. So I just wanted to point that out. It's up to you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hernandez for the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Chairman, this is Vice Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent. I'm here to give you a brief update on instructional technology happenings this year. Each building has been conducting a technology advisory committee that meets monthly. Since August, sixty-five staff members have completed licensure renewal requirements for technology utilizing our current paper-based process. Moving forward, we are utilizing blended learning training methods, which are digital media and traditional training methods to sort of revamp that process. Technology training for our stakeholders are offered weekly at each building, the central office, and by request. We provide a three-hundred-and-fifty training session opportunities on various applications and associated hardware, including SMART, Epson, Discovery Streaming, NearPod, Schoolology, Google, Apple, PowerSchool, and Microsoft. Attending educational conferences and growing partnerships are imperative in order to keep current with K-12 instructional technology. Conferences attended, or ones that we will be attending, include COSIN, the VISTI Conference, Google Summit, PowerSchool University, Discovery Streaming, Blended Learning, STEM, Project-Based Learning, Schoolology, and NearPod. Some of our partnerships in instructional technology this year include Better Lesson, James Madison University for ISTI program, the Buck Institute, and SMART. Digital citizenship. Citizen, a curriculum with Internet safety, K-12. Common sense media provides high-quality digital citizenship programs to educators and school communities to empower students to harness technology for learning and for life. These free resources include ratings and reviews of digital tools, a comprehensive K-12 digital citizenship curriculum, ready-made lesson plans, videos, webinars, and more. The digital citizenship curriculum covers the key concepts listed on the screen. Digital literacy program, K-8. Students are born with digital literacy skills. They may be able to play video games and use cell phones, but that doesn't necessarily mean they understand basic use, best practices, and safety risk when it comes to technology. Learning.com provides a digital literacy curriculum that covers digital literacy, Internet safety, coding, and adaptive keyboarding. Usage this year includes seventy-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-two total logins and four-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-three students actively using Learning.com each day. Coding skills, K-12. Easy Code within Learning.com provides tutorials and game-based challenges that guide students through the foundations of computer programming. Each year, all buildings participate in coding and digital events, such as Hour of Code, which is a worldwide effort to celebrate computer science, starting with a one-hour coding activity, but expanding to all sorts of community efforts. And Digital Learning Day, which promotes the effective use of modern-day tools to improve the learning experience in K-12 public schools. Osborne High School is finishing up year four in their e-Backpack initiative that was provided by the Virginia Department of Education. This initiative has assisted the building to transition towards many digital curriculums and content resources which have extended learning capabilities. As an example, the Gil Resource Database has been searched and utilized over fifty-thousand times this school year. The equitable learning opportunities provided with this initiative have helped to create an atmosphere of personalized learning. Towards this end, a blended learning environment called Google Classroom has been utilized at Osborne. Google Classroom provides an easy way to distribute assignments, communicate, and stay organized. While Google Classroom has been effective, a more sophisticated approach to provide personalized learning is found to be required. A learning management system, or LMS. An LMS, which is a software application used for the administration, documentation, tracking, reporting, and delivery of educational courses and training programs. The LMS that has been chosen was Schoolology. Schoolology is an award-winning learning management system that will offer students and their parents the opportunity to see assignments in grades, participate in group discussions, interact with teachers, track progress, monitor due dates, receive notifications, and so much more. Essentially, Schoolology will be an instructional dashboard. Schoolology this year was utilized at Baldwin Intermediate School as an instructional dashboard. Fifth-grade students, their parents, and building staff were part of what we called a year-one pilot. From August to May, two-hundred-and-forty-one users have logged in, sixty-eight courses have been linked, fourteen groups have been established. There have been thirty-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifteen site visits with five-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-nine page views, which is an average of a little over two-thousand views per user. Users have spent an average of eighteen minutes per visit. They have posted nine-hundred-and-eleven comments, submitted two-thousand, four-hundred-and-four assignments, and uploaded eight-hundred-and-ninety-four files. Again, this is just fifth grade, Baldwin Intermediate. They're doing outstanding things in that building. Schoolology will be made available to all stakeholders, fifth through twelfth grade, next school year. Turn it back over to Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. As we were stating before, technology planning is, is key to what, to what we do and, and how we get it done. We use our division-wide technology plan as, in addition to the school-based technology plans, who've augmented those to guide everything that we do in the department. This year, we formalized through a multi-stakeholder effort, an app and software review process, and that led to the creation of a database on our Intranet that all teachers have access to. There's currently more than two-hundred-and-fifty titles listed there that have been reviewed and approved. And it's a quick breakdown. They can sort by subject area, grade level, give them resources as to what's already been looked at. We've done a print management study. That's led to some significant changes. We had a meeting with our vendor this morning. We're going to be refreshing our entire copier fleet this coming summer, re-strategizing our printers over the summer. The principals have been working with their, their staffs to, in preparation for that, to become more efficient there. I'm very proud of the stakeholder support that our department and our, and Mr. Hernandez's instructional technology team were able to provide. We have support staff at every single one of the schools, have a very structured approach on how we tackle the issues. One of the things the IT department uses is our ticketing system. It was virtually non-existent about three years ago this time. We're now up to averaging three-hundred-and-twenty tickets per month, and eighty-four percent of those are able to be closed within five calendar days. And we too, just like the engagement survey, we do a survey every fifth ticket. It's just a simple four-question survey. And so looking at this year's results, ninety-nine point two percent of those tickets are coming back. Those users are satisfied or very satisfied with our, our completion times and overall resolutions. And we're always doing as much as we can to empower our users. This, at the beginning of the school year, we were able to purchase a system that automates password resets that actually cut into our ticket accounts, which is a good thing. But it enabled our users to, to be able to take advantage and we're, we're constantly realigning our systems to be able to do just that. Our classroom technology is, and this will follow along with Dr. Kramp talked about, our computer replacement program continued this year. I'm happy to report that we're able to still maintain our six-year refresh cycle. It benefits our, our students, our staff, benefits our teams. As the equipment gets older, it becomes harder and more expensive to support. And so this year, we've replaced five-hundred-and-sixty-three computers, and this is our fourth year of the program. And to date, we've replaced thirty-four-hundred computers through this program to keep, keep track. We're also able to, through, through the available budget, we added nine-hundred, this is in addition to the replacements, added nine-hundred instructional computers into our classrooms. And since the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen school year, we have added an additional thirty-seven-hundred instructional computers, and that does not include the more than thirteen-hundred iPads or the, more than twenty-two-hundred one-to-one tablets at the high school. And so these are virtually K-8 devices that are in the classroom. So seventy-seven percent increase in our computer inventory just in the past couple of years. We have a replacement program for our batteries to keep those sustainable, to place them usually midway through the six-year process to keep those viable. We're aggressively tackling our aging interactive projector solutions. To date, we've replaced seventy, this whole year alone, seventy of those systems. We have a huge project at Metz this summer. We're going to be replacing every single device at, at Metz, so they will be fully have the Epson Interactive standard. And as of right now, it leaves us about two-hundred left to do. We'll be down to about a hundred-and-forty, a hundred-and-fifty by the end of summer, which is tremendous impact out of the six-hundred-plus devices that we started with. We still have a very, very active focus on security. It's prevalent in just about every decision that we make, everything that we look at. We engaged a third-party firm last summer to come in and do a formal security architecture and assessment for them. They, they provided us with a seventy-plus-page report, an assessment of where we're at, took a lot of interviews and things on our aspirations and provided us a, in their opinion, a three-year roadmap on, on how to kind of attack some of those, those goals. And so we've been working toward that and following with that. My team has a meeting every single week, every Wednesday morning. Mr. Sansone convened a, a meeting that's always focused on security, our network architectures, what's going on in the environment. And so I just wanted to make that known that it is, it's very prevalent in all our decision-making. We engage a third-party to perform firewall and perimeter security management for us. They let us know not only when the bad guys are trying to get in, we get alerts, but also when our students or staff are doing things they shouldn't be. We get real-time alerts. If it's an Osborne student on one of their devices, they alert us. We contact our resources, our IT folks at the school. We track down the tablet and we remedy the issue, remove the offending software or whatever it may be. And then we are continuing working on our disaster recovery and business continuity, planning documentation, in case of we have to shut down our data center, move our data center, reestablish items to, to get back operational. I did want to address one, the, the computers, because that did come up. I'm happy to report we are obviously one-to-one at the high school. We are better than one-to-one at the middle school. Those devices do not go home, but in every core classroom, we have a cart of thirty computers, laptops, and they're augmented around the, the building as well. At the intermediate level, we are better than, everywhere else, we're better than two-to-one, a student-to-instructional device ratio, and we keep, continue to close that gap. For instance, Weems has been able to make significant gains. They're one-to-one at the grades one through four currently right now, through availability of other resources and things to close that gap. So we're continuing to push that, and that's, that's where we have a strategic plan on how to use the available funding to, to push those, to close that gap as we go down in the grade levels. And lastly, I just touched on our technology infrastructure. This past year, we were able to do significant network upgrades, the equipment, cabling, things like that at Dean, Hayden, and Weems. Our wireless infrastructure at Dean and Round. We continue to shrink our footprint in our data center. More and more of our servers are becoming virtualized. We're able to do more with less, requires less cooling, less power, and a less, bigger footprint for the devices. We continue to work on our voice-over-IP system. We've made many enhancements. We actually have a all-day meeting tomorrow with a vendor kickoff meeting tomorrow for some advanced features that we're looking to implement over the summer. And this past year, we, we upgraded all of the software. Our phone system is more than just one system. We have phone system, voicemail, our emergency response system, a lot, a lot of components that go to that, and that was all upgraded this year. I just want to point out that those first three categories are all made possible because of the CIP funding that we receive. And so I'm very proud that the board supports that and has continued to do that and provides us a sustainable framework to continue our upgrades, not all at one time, but over time. And so we'll, we'll keep up to date. Our team has been able to reimagine, big job, but as of a month ago, actually, this data's a little outdated, eighty-six percent of our computer inventory was up to Windows ten. Our goal is by the end of this summer to have right near a hundred percent. You know anything at all that the, about the Microsoft Windows seven gives end of life, end of support in about a year and a half? So we're trying to get ahead of the curve. Just again, security's a big focus. They'll stop pushing out patches and things like that to protect our, our systems. We did finish an RFP. We launched last December, part with the E-Rate process. We're recognizing the, the significant impact on our Internet bandwidth as well as the ability to keep it up, so availability. And so we went through an RFP process. We awarded a contract to Cox Business to provide a second Internet circuit. City Council had the second reading this past, last week and approved that, and they're going to be pulling fiber optic cable under Route twenty-eight and into Central Office. Hopefully sometime early next school year, we will have that second circuit up and operational, provide us more bandwidth. And we've built it for plenty of expansion and have, have been informed also that they'd be able to move that to any location that we may need to go to in the future as well. And then one last thing, it's just something neat. This year, we piloted network-based in-house broadcast system. So most of our schools have a very old coaxial cable system, literally, quite literally falling apart. One-third of Hayden Elementary School, the cable is no good. They couldn't, could not watch the morning broadcasts because the infrastructure was just literally crumbling. It's been in the ceilings too long. And so we found a network-based solution to do that. And so, we found a network-based solution to do that. We launched that at Hayden and Weems to pretty, good success. It's kind of revitalized the program. The students are very happy to be able to do this, and we've procured for five more buildings to get this over the summer, so when they come back in the fall, they'll be doing that as well. And lastly, I think that was my last one. I would just like to take the opportunity to recognize and sincerely thank Dr. McGorrick. This will be my last update while she's here. But we've had, we've had no greater advocate for technology than Dr. McGorrick, and all this wouldn't be possible without her support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Nice touch. Any questions or comments? Well, I'm going to make one quick, because this is like right up my alley. First, thank you all, first, Dr. McGorrick, thank you for your support of technology, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Sansone, Mr. Barrett. Cybersecurity is one of the most vexing issues that small entities face, and in my day job, it's one of the things I hear a lot about, and the fact that we're addressing that proactively is very helpful, especially because what we do directly impacts students' learning. So, thank you for your recovery plans. Thank you for your foresight in getting things like another circuit to help our students and even helping with the broadcast. All that stuff makes an impact. So, thank you for your work, and thank you for your advocacy. It's been very important.
Thank you.
And before Mr. Hawkins gets up, Dr. McGorrick has something she wants to add from her previous presentation.
Correct. And I also want to say something about Mr. Sansone and Mr. Barrett. I know that Robert remembers when he first came, five years ago, and we had, we lost email, we lost everything because of our infrastructure, and he started sorting through that. Then Bobby came. And we may be small, but we're mighty. And I'm very proud of our system that we have, and it's their team, the work that they do, and that the board continues to allot funding. When we first got started, we received the state dollars, and that was for student computers. But then, if we had leftover money from CIP, we put it into technology. But now, we look at technology, and it's how we work, and it's how we learn. And I truly appreciate the funding that the board has done, and you've made it a priority. And I appreciate the work that technology has done. Pedro, the work that you're doing with our teachers, it's, we're all working hand in hand, and the sky's the limit, really, with what our kids are going to experience. Then, going back to our textbook adoption piece, there was a comment made about our health classes being at 50, which I had a heart attack, and I looked out, and I have Dr. Saunders here, who immediately checked our class sizes, because thanks to the technology that we have, we're very transparent. And I want to report that our average class size in fifth grade health is 26 students. Our average class size in sixth grade is 36 students, and in ninth grade, 36 students. Now, I will say that 36 is, we're still under the class size for the state of Virginia. We do like to be at 32 or less. That's the number we always shoot for, and...
Can I add, those are the highest classes?
Yes, those are the highest, excuse me.
The highest is not necessarily the average.
So, that was the highest classes. And then, finally, our largest driver's ed class is 38. And so, you know, we still, there is a discussion I still want to have with staff about our class sizes, but something else that happens, though, is we get our class sizes set, and then students come in. And instead of turning a student down, we will sometimes pull in extra chairs and desks, but we are still below the state number. But 32 is a lot better.
Okay. And one thing I want to add, we may have to be updated on this, but if I recall back to my teaching days, I think when we purchased books, we had to buy them in certain sets. So, if you had 36, you couldn't buy 37, you had to buy 50 or 100. So, that may be a factor as well.
You are correct. We buy them bundles of 25, and that's when you get your best numbers. So, the extra textbooks that we do have, they will last us during the textbook adoption period, because unfortunately, the books do get lost.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening. I don't know if you can see it on the screen, but we have a utility update. Wanted to brief you on the progress, where we stand from July of this year through March 31st of this year, and we're showing year-over-year data, so we can have some comparison. You can see, well, one of the things that you can't see is that, you can see a little bit where Dean Elementary has gone down, as you know that we've had water concerns out there. We had a crew come in and detected a leak, and we have corrected that problem out of Dean. So, our usage is much better, is much more in line with other schools throughout the district at Dean. You can't really see it here, because when it says $2 million, it's because it's camouflaged by all of the months prior, from July through February. Also, we do have some concerns still at Osborne High School. We've got to go and figure out what's going on. We had the same crew that helped us at Dean, who's working now with us at Osborne, to try to determine whether or not we have any water leak at Osborne High School. You can also see that we have concerns about the natural gas at a couple of schools, and that we're working on now. One of the things that I wanted to point out to you as well is that we've used the analytics or the metrics that are established by the Council of Great City Schools. Council of Great City Schools is an association of major school divisions all across the nation. And if you go into their website, you'll be able to see a metric for almost everything, from, you know, cost per lunch or whatever. They have metrics for almost everything, but they also have how much, school divisions across the nation are, how much water they are consuming, and how much electricity they are using on a per-square-foot basis. So, they have them separated in the low, median, and upper quartile, and you can see those listed above. So, while we still do have some concerns about what's going on at Osborne, we're still within the range with the Council of Great City Schools' data. We're in pretty good shape across all of our areas. So, if you look at those, I wanted to give you that information, so you have some idea of relevance and how we're doing as compared to our peers across the nation. They don't have one for natural gas, they don't have a metric for that, but they do have for electric and water. We are staying on top of our electrical and water usage. Some of the data, the importance of this data from the Council of Great City Schools is that you'll look at Hayden, you'll see where Hayden went down, like 119,000 gallons, and you say, wow, that's really great, what are they doing at Hayden? They're still higher, or in the high range of the quartiles as shown by the Council of Great City Schools. So, even though they have come down, and they are doing and moving in the right direction, this is an indication that we still have work to be done at that school. So, are there any questions, concerns, comments at this time?
Any comments? Mr. Alhambra.
Just a couple of things. I noticed, Osborne, you just built new fields. I'm guessing a lot of that water went to those new fields that you built, that were not there yet.
Well, we're not sure. I don't think so. We have, we've been disaggregating the data, looking at the individual meters. We have a separate meter that goes out to, for irrigation. That was my first thought, that it would probably be irrigation issues, but it doesn't appear to be there. So, that's much more concerning to us now, because it doesn't appear to be any significant increase in the amount of irrigation. In fact, you know, we've had such a wet winter and spring, I was doubtful that we would use much of in irrigation in those areas.
Also, Mayfield, I mean, that looks like an area of concern. I know you have to note that you had summer school there, but it would seem unlikely during the short summer school period, you would actually double the consumption of water and an increase in natural gas. You're not heating anything, maybe food, but not heating anything during the summer school program.
Yeah, well, it is, well, a lot of our, a lot of our food service areas do operate on with natural gas, so, I mean, and so, a lot of times, the boilers in the school, even in the summertime, are operational to have balance out the humidity levels within the school. So, it's not like it was back in the day, where you would just cut the heat off, and you'd have the air conditioning running. The boilers at most of our schools are running all the time, along with the air conditioning as well, to help balance out air quality. So, it's a complex issue that we're looking at. We're fortunate this year that we have engaged into an energy performance contract, and our partners, Regina's and Control's, will be with us, and they'll be in our buildings, and they'll be helping us this summer, trying to figure out what are we, what's going on, and to be able to get our levels at an optimum level, our usage at an optimal level.
Any comments on this? I think that's it. One thing that occurred to me, if we're using a baseline average from the national group...
Yes, sir.
...it might be affected by the age of our school buildings, so maybe the proper baseline would be, I'm not sure they have it discreetly broken down, buildings of those ages, because buildings that are older, you know, inherently would not be as efficient with this water system or electrical use.
So, I think, I think what we're trying to, I think it's the reason why we put the low median and upper quartiles on there, is to show you the range of where we're at. When I look at something that's in the upper quartile, I think we could probably do better than that with the ages of our buildings. But if we were at, you know, if we were over the upper quartile, or then, I would say that that was an indicator that we need to go look at and take into account. All of these, all of these things are just indicators, they're red flags for you to go look at, and if you, if, at the end of the day, you come back and you've researched, and you find that we're okay, and it's due to the age of the building, or the way that it's designed, or whatever, then we can, we can be satisfied with the result. But these are just indicators to help lead you into the direction to try to figure out what, if you have a problem, and then help you investigate where it might be.
Thank you. Next, stop-on-camera system.
So, today, we give you a periodic update on the stop-on-camera system. During January 18th through April the 30th this year, we've had, we've written approximately 326 citations. Of those, 274 of them have been paid. On average, there's four and a half violations per day, or five and a half citations per bus. Of the above, 84% have been satisfied, remaining 52 will be forthcoming. And I know this data sounds, you say we have, on average, four and a half violations a day, or five passes, over five passes on average per bus. It sounds horrible, and it is, it's not, and it's not good, but I'm going to give you some good news in a minute. So, we show you some, some of the breakdown between, by month, of how the citations are issued. But if we compare where we were at this same time, for this same period last year, you can see that we have had a dramatic change in the number of citations issued, and the number of passes per day or per bus. This program has made a significant impact to the safety of our children in coming, loading, and coming to school and going home in the afternoon. So, some of the main areas that we always report, the top five areas where we've had major issues, we can see that we've had dramatic reduction in those areas. And this is exactly what we wanted to happen. This is following the plan. We wanted to have, we realized that there was a problem, and we've done something about it. And I think, you know, first of all, this school board deserves recognition for their leadership in approving this program to start to begin with. This program is still very rare throughout the Commonwealth. Of the 132 school divisions in the state, it's probably less than 10 or 15 of those with the jurisdictions that have implemented the stop-on-camera system. You know, I want to thank City Council for approving the ordinance, and the main people that are not here, that I wish, could thank, I want to thank publicly, are the people who do all the work, like the police department, and the circuit court judges, and the county, and the city treasurer. They're the ones who deal with this, day in and day out, and make it, and make it work. So, there's a lot, we got a lot of good news, and I know it's been a long time coming. Every quarter, I felt like I gave you more, worse news, and it was bad. I'm so happy about the results that we have right now, and we hope that it will continue in, on this trend. You know, this was never, ever about making money for the school's division, and that's the reason why we don't have it budgeted, is a revenue source, and these funds, we would give up every dime that we ever got from it, just to, just to make sure that we didn't issue any citations. So, thank you for your leadership and for approving this plan, and we look forward to these numbers continuing to go down in the future.
Thank you. Any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Albert.
Just echoing what Mr. Hawkins just said, this is, I think we're the right kind of community for this kind of program. We're in urban jurisdiction with a lot of transient drivers. I think the signs on some of the streets, you know, Grant Avenue is example, 28, I think have also helped making people aware of it, and keeping the children safe is what we're supposed to be about. So, if this is making a difference, great.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Albert, and, Mr. Hawkins, I agree with you, the people that are doing the work, we have to give them a lot of credit, and that includes you and your staff. I know you've continually followed up on this, and it is very important to this board, the safety of our children, not the money, but the safety of our children. And, you know, some of the differences on these, on, you know, 44th, 73% less citations in different months, that's spectacular, and that's, that's, you know, down 195 in March. That's 195 times our kids are safer than otherwise, and we appreciate everybody that's participated in this.
Thank you. I could echo what they said. I love what you said about the fact that we give up every dime to keep our kids safe. Thanks for bringing the program to us, and we're glad it's working so well.
Thank you.
That is the last item on the agenda. We have a motion for closed session, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city in the analysis center are closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, Part 8. Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Students, STEU 1718-07, STEU 1718-08, STEU 1718-09, STEU 1718-10, 11, 12, and 13. Is that okay? Please. And Personnel Matter, PERS 1718-1519, and PERS 1718-1543.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Kiefer, second by Mr. Alhambra. The District of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, Part 8. Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended for the following purpose: Discussion of Students, 1718-07, -08, -09, -10, -11, -12, and 13. And Personnel Matter, PERS 1718-1519, PERS 1718-1543. Am I in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it 7-0, we're in closed session.